I'd like to welcome Troop 76117, Blue Color Guard.
Audience attention, Girl Scouts attention. Girl Scouts advance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Girl Scouts attention, Girl Scouts retreat.
Out of the floor, girls of all corps, that was Mona Kowski, Kendra Warren, Olivia James, Emma Comer, Catherine Hollihan, and Lillian Andre. Thank you, girls, very much. Are there any housekeeping motions?
Mr. Moderator, I move to the expense of the meeting from office.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move to the expense of the meeting of the town officials and representatives and the day by no other content.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, everything is settled here at eight hundred and eleven p.m.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I move to the expense of the town officials and the town officials and the chapter eleven, seconded.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously, board of selectmen.
So I hope you can hear me, we tend to speak softly. But even in Mr. Moderator, town officials, into the residents of Dytonians and their families who have suffered profound losses this past year from the COVID-19 epidemic and from the countless challenges that so many of us continue to face, our hearts continue to beat with all of our residents who have experienced great loss during these last few months. I would like to especially pay tribute to the pastor John Duma, husband and former selectman Nancy Duma, former selectman Edward Santos, husband of former selectman Bernard Santos, who is our current town administrator, former police chief Alfred Machico, and most recently, our former selectman Ed Reese, whose funeral is being held tomorrow morning. We owe a debt of gratitude to these gentlemen for all their contributions to make Dyton the community we now know and love. I would ask that we all stand in a moment of silence for them, and hope they have all of their past and their last words. Thank you. Condolence is to their family and friends. I would also like to take a moment to thank our police, fire, emergency responders, public health officials, nurses, medical professionals, educators, and all of our employees and residents who have played a role in overcoming these challenges last year. To all of you, I will leave, say thank you for everything you continue to do. Mr. Moderator, since you last met in November, the board of selectmen is proud to inform the continued progress we made in our town government and for the residents throughout our community. As we enter into last year's holiday season, Dyton COVID is a bill to once again adapt to the COVID-19 pandemic with a virtual ice cream ceremony, a stop, a cruiser event in a much anticipated Santa Light, thanks to the continued partnership between the Lions Club, the Dyton Fire, and the Blues Development. We moved into the first year with a continual emphasis on restoring brand up and some leads to help, to further help Dyton forward. The town has applied for 120,000 Dallas shared streets and places and applications to help us further invest in our roadway and the societal infrastructure. The historical commission has secured a $12,000 vibrant Dallas Oracle City and Main Grant to update the town the listing of historic resources in town. The Biden PAC was awarded a $12,000 vibrant Dallas state fire recovery grant. The town is also currently restoring various old infrastructure on five brands to help further enhance our vision as a vibrant and all inclusive community. In late January, the board of selectmen include three current candidates interested in becoming Dyton's new town administrator to replace our former town administrator, Valerie Paris. Board is very excited to have the unanimous elected Michael Anderson for those of our members. As that town administrator, Mr. Mall began working for the town in early March and was able to contribute a significant amount to the fiscal year 2022 budget process. He is also a post-clinician. He has also, he has already made inroads of work for our legislators and many of our parents, boards, and communitys and residents. We are very excited to have Michael working for the town. We also afford a board to appoint Mont Machico as a new town clerk until our next town election to replace our longtime town clerk Sylvester. We would also like to welcome our newest member of the board of selectmen. We would like to say goodbye, we look forward to working as we deal with the daily duties of selectmen into the benefits of all of our residents. We might take the time to say goodnight to 2021, Dyton, home with Crystal Tack and Bristol Plymouth on their graduation with which. This evening, we are pleased to submit for consideration our annual town meeting warrant that continues to be in place on my August 11th. The process of developing our proposed fiscal year 2022 budget in annual town meeting has been collaborative effort inclusive of the public heads, our boards, and committees and residents. Throughout the process, the board of selectmen had worked with these thickholds to ensure that the proposed budget reflects the needs of the entire Dyton community. This budget process was a challenging process as we all worked with a team of the towns committed to responsible fiscal planning and targeted capital investments. The board of selectmen, the public heads, and our boards have committed their services responsibility to provide incredible leadership that allows the town, the town of Dyton, to continue prioritizing the part-time services that Dyton residents deserve and expect. We look forward to hearing this discussion and we're happy to answer any questions about anything out of the chair we need through the notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selectmen. The finance committee.
Mr. Moderator, board of selectmen, Mr. Administrator, town clerk, town council members of finance committee, first and foremost fellow residents of Dyton. Welcome to annual town meeting. My name is Ed Swartz and I'm the current chairman of the finance committee. Let me begin by thanking the department heads, the town administrator, the town council, board of selectmen, and board of district administrator Carol Brady for all that they did in assistance in preparing tonight's warrant. Although it was a different set of circumstances that we all are just going through, the process of developing a balanced and thoughtful budget process moved forward. The current financial stability of our town is strong. I say that with some trepidation as we have learned over time, things can change in an instant. And we prepare each and every year to be prepared for those instances. We as a town have done a good job in preparing ourselves, but we must continue to be diligent, vigilant in our efforts. The budget presented this evening is balanced and meets all the thresholds to stay within our position two and a half budget. It also addresses some of the immediate needs as well as positions us to be successful moving forward. It provides for a strong commitment to the services that we as townspeople expect. It's a true conservative approach without jeopardizing what we as taxpayers expect. The finance team began this process with budget requests in excess of $1 million overall revenue. Tonight, we present to you a balanced and affordable budget. Thank you again for your attendance at this important annual meeting, and we welcome all comments and questions along the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, finance committee. Board of assessors.
Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone, all elected officials and residents. Along with you in this meeting, the assessors, we worked on a number of pilot agreements. Pilot agreements have payment in lieu of tax and financial solos. At length this evening, we will be asked to vote on one of those pilot agreements. We have, thank you. We have a second agreement that will be ready for the fall town meeting. It wasn't completed in time to be able to vote on it tonight. We also have three potential other pilot agreements in the offing, and these, if they're completed in time, will also be brought to you at the fall town meeting. These pilot agreements represent a substantial amount of money, and what they are is a payment plan, as I said, for the payment of personal property taxes. That's the solar panels and all of the equipment that goes with it. Real estate taxes on the property that they sit on are taxed at the commercial rate, and the owner of the property pays those taxes. The assessors worked with the finance committee, the town administrator, worked on the estimated growth while we're trying to determine where we would be coming into town meeting from a financial standpoint, and we also discussed anticipated state aid. There will be a public hearing after the fall town meeting, at which time the tax rates, FY22, will be set. The board of assessors expresses its thanks to all town departments for their assistance and cooperation over the past year. Respectfully submitted, Carol Borogad, chairman, Eric Easterday, clerk, and Nancy Gula, member.
Thank you, assessors. Is there a report from the school committee?
Thank you. To you and to you, Mr. Moderator, I'm going to go with Scott. Congratulations on your promotion. Readings, my name is Anthony Yezar, I'm the superintendent of schools for the Dino Regional School District. Tonight, we bring readings from our school committee, but also I'd like to just share just quickly a reflection. I am finishing my seventh year as the superintendent of schools, ready to embark on my eighth year in this district. I've enjoyed it immensely. My own children have prospered within this district, and I can't thank you enough. But there's been one constant in my serving me as a superintendent, and that constant is the town of Dyton. The support that you folks have shown to our school district has been just absolutely phenomenal, and tonight, I wanted to make sure that I was here to express that to you on behalf of our school district and on behalf of me as the superintendent of schools. More importantly, just on those of you who did attend the graduation, the representation from Dyton was just great. The board of selectmen, I believe you all were all there, and that's very much appreciated. And it didn't go unnoticed with everybody. Thank you for that. That was excellent. Nancy, what would be a graduation without Nancy Gula? Actually, Nancy, I think a few years back, she, you and several other individuals, the first graduating class or at least those who did that? Oh, the what?
Last year.
There you go. Only Nancy corrected you? That's okay. That's good. That works out wonderfully. But I remember vividly the stories that Nancy shared with us as I believe Doug Telly took over the tour at one point as well, but it was not in the done by interviews at all. The relationships we have built over the seven years that I've been here are memorable. There's no doubt about it. Working with folks like Janania, obviously, and Tom Curry, working within the district, you know, working with the finance folks, particularly Ed. I've known Ed for a very, very long time, well before the seven years. The relationships will continue. The appreciation that you folks have showed us has not gone unnoticed, and I wanted to make sure that I said that to you folks tonight. We have another budget, obviously, that is a big chunk of change. There's no question about that. And you folks deserve, and your children deserve, the best education possible. The finance folks, they know education. They know what we need to build. My business industry is here with me tonight, Paul Kitchen. Paul Kitchen brings a wealth of knowledge to this district as well. We appreciate all of our thank yous done as well. But more importantly, what I want to leave you with is this. We will never, ever forget what it is that you folks do for us and for our kids, obviously, and your kids. And this past year's been difficult. There's no question about it. When we went to Ramon, stepped up, the parents did. You folks took on something that you never thought you would have to, and then low and behold, before you knew it, your little light at the end of the tunnel, the seniors came back a little bit earlier than we had expected, and then we brought back all the students from all spots. There are still some students that are still remote, which is perfectly fine. And then hopefully, we will have what we anticipate being normal, like beginning of the school year in September. So with that in mind, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Azar, and Miss Wills. Captain Lyle, no report? Any other town committee or official? Seeing none.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the board of selectmen to appoint all necessary town officials and town committees, not otherwise provided, all by statute.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator. The town scouts and salaries of elected officials, town officials for fiscal 2022 and according to provisions of section 108 of chapter 41 of general laws as outlined this evening, tomorrow, as recommended by the finance.
Motion made and seconded. Could everyone hear that? There's a motion. Move to establish the salaries of the elected town officials for fiscal year 2022 in accordance with provisions of section 108 of chapter 41 of the general laws, as recommended by the finance committee and printed in the article 30 to June 7, 2021, annual town meeting warrant. That motion was made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. Prior to moving on, just want to confirm, all the non-voters are in the front right corner over here?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Article four.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to raise the appropriate general government account as specified in the warrant for the June 7, 2021, annual town meeting, article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of said departments, as there is provided, sum of $1,688,871.94 for fiscal year 2022.
That motion was not seconded. We're going to hold on that one. We're going to restate article four. Yes.
I move that the town vote to raise the appropriate taxation and transfer from available funds to appropriation necessary to defray town charges and assessments as considered by finance committee, verded in article four, June 7, 2021, annual town meeting warrant.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Moderator.
I move that the town vote to raise the appropriate general government accounts as specified in the warrant for the June 7, 2021, annual town meeting, article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of said departments, as there is provided, sum of $1,688,871.94 for fiscal year 2022.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommendation.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommendation.
Bring a motion to seconded with finance committee and board of selectmen recommendations. Is there any discussion? Please stand up and state your name and address.
I just want to revolve this up from line 122 to the finance committee recommendation and the rest.
Looking for clarification, always remove from line 122.
There was $5,000. There was an overlap between two budgets, so it was addressed in the supplemental budget.
Yeah. Do you have any further? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to raise the appropriate transfer from the ambulance fund to public safety accounts as specified in the warrant for the June 7, 2021, annual town meeting, article four, specifically for personnel and expenses of said departments, as there is provided, sum of $3,950,401.43 for fiscal year 2022. Finance committee recommendation.
Motion made and seconded. Finance committee recommends, is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
We also recommend.
Board of selectmen recommends. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise the appropriate for education assessments as specified in the warrant for the June 7, 2021, annual town meeting, article four, sum of $12,252,705.76 for fiscal year 2022.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends. The board of selectmen also recommend. Board of selectmen also recommends. Discussion? Name and address, please.
I need 372. For education, 300, why is the expense 569 from 35,000 last year to 101,000 fiscal year?
Just clarify a little more. Yeah, that would be the Bristol, Bristol County Agricultural School, and in this year's budget, we also have the capital expense of the expansion of the schools. So we don't, we're not only paying for the students, but we have a portion of capital expenses, so that is the first. Yeah.
So there's a clarification question on what the change was on, I don't remember the line item, but it was the BP line item associated that it had an increase from $100, not even in Bristol Aggie. Bristol Aggie, my apologies, the Bristol Aggie line item. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in?
Yes, people of all, if you want to, sort of persist, Bristol County Agricultural School, Bristol Plymouth. What are we taking away from Dyton? It's about being one of these schools.
So the question is, is what is, why are they increased basically in Bristol Aggie? And why are they increased in?
Yeah, because it's those two schools, and same with DR, Dyton schools, but kids are reading with Dyton, high school, DR, not going to that school, going to these schools. So good money there, but from there, they go there.
I would prefer that the superintendent.
Dr. Azar, would you like to skip to that?
Sure. I guess that didn't go that far back. We have, so when I first became superintendent, a gentleman by the name of Dr. Groves, who has since passed away, he was the superintendent of Bristol Plymouth. And when I met Dr. Groves and Alex Pendelage, who was the current Bristol Plymouth superintendent, what was left for me was that there was this competition between the three schools, Deion, BA, and BP. And as we got to know a little bit more about how these two technical schools work along with Deion, I came to realize my second and third year was that we are not in competition. The three schools present opportunities for all of our kids. So if you're a Dyton student and you're a Rahoban student, then you have an opportunity to attend Bristol Plymouth, Bristol Aggie, or Deion. There is a misnomer of sorts that our kids are not leaving the high school. They didn't get here to leave. By eighth grade or thereabouts, what I've come to find out is that Bristol Plymouth offers a number of technical programs under chapter 74. Deion Rahoban is a comprehensive school that also offers chapter 74 programs. And then, of course, DA of Bristol Aggie is a little bit more strategic in what they offer. So between the three schools, your children in Deion and the children in Rahoban who go through the KDA program, DA program, have opportunities to go to those schools, and that's what they've chosen to do. At Deion, we also, we have to provide to Bristol Aggie and Bristol Plymouth our residents who attend the district. So they have access to our student addresses and things like that. So some of you probably, those of you who have children, although at once with this process, you've received in the mail more often than not, summer programs, brochures, open houses, and things like that for BP and DA. This is the first year that we here at Deion Rahoban Regional School District will be offering a summer program as well to showcase our chapter 74 programs. But be mindful of this, we cannot begin any program that BA and BP already has in place. So Dr. Groves said to me back seven years ago, six years ago, or thereabouts, look at the programs that BA and BP do not offer. So we did that, and then what happened, one of them is a criminal justice program about three years ago, an environmental science program as well, and a culinary program that we started. an environmental science program as well, and a culinary program that we started as, not a chapter seventy-four, because many of you know that Bristol Plymouth adds that program already. We are duty bound not to do that. So therefore, to the gentleman's question, students have every opportunity who lived in Rehoboth and in DIAN to choose Bristol Plymouth or Bristol Aggie. They also have to get into those schools. So it's not, they just can't go. They have to be accepted to that. So over the years, we've, we've tried to address what it is that we can do from a standpoint from DIAN to try to be more, not, I won't say competitive, because we're not supposed to be, but what is it that we can do, and what we offer here is a number of advanced placement courses. So students who are in the chapter seventy-four programs here at DIAN, their opportunity to expand what they do. But nevertheless, Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie and DIAN, we all offer programs and opportunities for our kids. If they choose BP, that's fine. If they choose BA, that's fine. And if they choose to stay at DIAN, that's fine as well. So that whole philosophy of keeping BA and BP away from our kids, that's not something that philosophy never stopped. And then one of the things that one of our local school districts did, Torn, if you, those of you who are familiar with Torn, they actually, ten years ago, maybe, or thereabouts, they brought their eighth graders to the high school. My wife is a teacher of eighth graders at Torn High School. And one of the reasons they did that ten years ago was to keep the eighth graders in the comprehensive chapter seventy-four programs in Torn. And that's something that we've tried to address from time to time, but our regional agreement is not allowed right now, eighth graders to come to the high school. So that, that question has been developed as well. So I'm hoping, I guess we should ask the gentleman if that kind of touched with the answer. Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to speak to the question.
Mr. Moderator.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Azar, for that. To, to answer the question from a financial standpoint, it's unsustainable for us to continue on the path that we're coming on. And to the points that Dr. Azar made, we have to challenge our education, educational leaders, not just at DIAN Rehoboth, but at Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie, on how we manage that to stay within the constraints that we're going to have. Because you, you're absolutely correct. If you look at those numbers, they are unsustainable for the long term. And it's up to we as a community to, to challenge our education system to the point of the eighth graders. Or how do we do things differently that will keep the students in DIAN Rehoboth to stay in DIAN and Rehoboth? Because we have, if you look at Bristol Plymouth, for example, our enrollment increase is, I think we're over a hundred DIAN students at Bristol Plymouth. Less than five to seven years ago, when we opened that program back up, we were at fifteen to twenty students. And if you think about it, a hundred students out of a population of, what do we have in high school now, about seven hundred and fifty? You know, we've lost one seventh of our students by going outside to, to, and we are the smallest community. So that's a significant amount, and it is unsustainable. And thank you for bringing that up, because it is something that we all have to be aware of. Thank you.
One more question.
Sorry, going back to ideas. Would anyone else like to speak? Discussion? I'll have one more question.
So why are we spending more money?
One more.
Would you say it's unsustainable? That's really it?
Okay. Question is, is why are we spending more money?
So there's a formula that we have a requirement of what we as a community need to support the education system. And I, I mean, I think that's, well, there is, there's a formula that lays that out that, that is our minimum contribution as well as what it is to run the school district. So if we chose to vote no, it doesn't, at the end of the day, the state sets the guidelines in how we fund the schools. So there is a number that, that builds that. It's just not an arbitrary number that the school system comes up with.
Thank you.
There is a formula.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I wouldn't say it's longer, you have to buy the education, please do please buy.
Any further discussion on motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate to highway accounts as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of the highway department as herein provided the sum of one million sixty-four thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Second. Board of Selectmen also recommends.
Motion made and seconded with recommendations by the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate to disanitation account to where waste collection and disposal as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of said department as therein provided the sum of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen also recommends.
Board of Selectmen also recommends. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate to other environmental accounts to wit the cemetery account as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of said department as therein provided the sum of nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Board of Selectmen recommendation as well. Discussions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate to human services accounts as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of said departments as therein provided the sum four hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Board of Selectmen also recommends. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from egg access and capable related fund to culture and recreation accounts as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for personnel and expenses of said departments as therein provided the sum three hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and six cents for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation.
Board of Selectmen recommends also.
Board of Selectmen recommendation. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from Title V account to debt service accounts as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for expenses of said accounts as therein provided the sum of three hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars for fiscal year 2022.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee does recommend.
Finance Committee recommends.
Board of Selectmen recommendation. Board of Selectmen also recommends.
Board of Selectmen also recommends. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate to employee benefit accounts as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, specifically for expenses of said accounts as therein provided the sum of two million two hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars thirty-nine cents for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendations. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Board of Selectmen also recommends. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to raise and appropriate to liability insurance accounts as specified in the warrant for the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting, Article four, and specifically for expenses of said accounts as therein provided for some of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation.
Board of Selectmen. She also recommends.
Board of Selectmen recommends. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a budget. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to approve the following sums to be expended under the direction of the Board of Sewer Commissioners for the maintenance of the sewer enterprise for fiscal year 2022 as recommended by the Finance Committee and printed in Article five of the June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting warrant. Finance Committee does recommend.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen? Board of Selectmen. This is a majority vote? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote pursuant to MGL chapter forty-four, section fifty-three, E and a half, as most recently amended, establish fiscal year limitation on expenditures from the revolving funds established by the town indictment general by us, section thirty-six, departmental revolving funds. With such limitations for fiscal year 22 as stated in Article six for June seventh, twenty twenty-one, annual town meeting warrant. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation.
Board of Selectmen recommends also.
Board of Selectmen recommends. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction and further allow the Board of Selectmen to sell through the sealed bid process according to MGL chapter thirty, E, section sixteen, all properties which the town has legally acquired by tax title.
Motion made and seconded. So non-financial articles.
Board of Selectmen recommend. Board of Selectmen recommend.
Board of Selectmen recommend. Any discussion?
Yes, about all the way to twenty-four, talking today. Um, so what will the board put in place? Is done by property owners, is it for anything going up?
So the question is, is what happened? So what, what happened before they could vote on this? So this is something we vote on every year. It's in every, it's something we give the authority, Board of Selectmen do each, each annual town meeting.
We, we, we request the authority from the voters at town meeting every year for that.
It's a request they put forward, thank you. It's a request they put forward, annual town meeting each year for the authority. As the state law actually requires that the Board of, uh, the Town Meeting give the Board of Selectmen authority. You can't sell or buy real estate without Board of Selectmen's authority. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue of the financial year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, chapter forty-four, section four, and to issuing no more notes therefore payable within one year. Internew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with General Laws, chapter forty-four, section seventeen.
Second. Thank you. Motion made and seconded. For clarity, this just requires a majority vote, as it's a short-term debt authorization of any year, so it does not require a two-thirds majority. Board of Selectmen does recommend. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to appropriate for available funds from mass department of public works for fiscal year 2022 for the purpose of expanding funds for capital improvements of local roads under transportation bond issued, chapter ninety. Three hundred one thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
I moved that the town vote to appropriate from available funds from man. From funds from mass department of public works for fiscal year 2022 for the purpose of expanding funds for capital improvements of local roads under transportation bond issued, chapter ninety. Three hundred one thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Just to reread it, make sure we're on the same page. I moved that town vote to appropriate from mass department of public works for fiscal year 2022 for the purpose of expanding funds for capital improvements of local roads under transportation bond issued, chapter ninety. Three hundred one thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and zero cents. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to make changes in grave contained land by purchase or eminent domain and to sell damaged land taken in conjunction with fiscal year 2022 highway program under chapter ninety, and the town vote for improvement.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to grant the Board of Selectmen the authority to obtain whatever process or easements as necessary to make changes in grave contained land by purchase or imminent domain and to settle damages for land taken in conjunction with highway needs or road repairs during reconstruction projects.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen subject to approval of the Finance Committee to dispose of used return, used items returned to them by sale to highest bidder.
Motion made and seconded. Can everyone hear that?
I'll read again.
Can everyone hear it? Yes, okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator. I moved to see if the town legislature vote for food, flying, gas, oil, and wine. The mass power of the local park, the town, the town. oil, and water, the mass power, the local power, the tax, and energy, for like the annual dry exhausts on the fall of 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38,
Motion made in seconded, would anybody like me to repeat the motion? All right, any discussion? Is there a recommendation from the Board of Assessors on that, as it affects taxation?
Yes.
The Board of Assessors recommends. Sir, should we like to speak to that at all?
Motion.
These are exact, these are exacting for disabilities that have during syrup, it's lost an eye, lost a limb, that type of thing. We've done this, uh, the last two years, it has to be better here in, in, at town.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve for the community preservation annual reserves in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2022, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriation from FY 2022 estimated revenues for the committee administrative expenses, $5,000, reserves from FY 2022 estimated revenues for historic resources, $12,500, from FY 2022 estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $12,500, from FY 2022 estimated revenues for open space, $12,500, from FY 2022 estimated revenues for budget reserves, $82,500.
Motion made in seconded, is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Finance. And Board of Selectmen recommend, discussion.
Mr. Moderator, since the FY 2016 main street, I just want to just speak briefly about a change of numbers from prior year. The reason why the change was because the registry of deeds have received quite a bit of monies or deceits, so what happened is the town that was moving based on the numbers of $100,000, which is the 1% of the real estate act, which is exactly 100,000 dollars per cent, so those monies had increased this year precipitously, so there may be a change of, it's the fault of the media, right, to change, uh, again, the sweepstakes, this year they're predicting that the CTC distributions for communities may be an upper of 30%. So I just want to get that in mind, so the town that receives $100,000, we receive maybe $30,000 on top of that, so, and then, and again, the numbers had increased precipitously with the receipts were, uh, thanks, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, I think.
You can ask a question.
Um, anybody to see democracy and anybody being able to have a maximum with all our children?
That's out of order, please sit down, if you'd like to speak to the motion, speak to the motion. That's out of order, if you'd like to speak to the motion.
I will.
If you'd like to further speak to the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimously, Article fifteen.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $25,000 from the historic resources reserve to be expended by the Community Preservation Commission for the hiring of a preservation consultant to complete the Dayton community-wide survey project to update the listing of historic resources in town.
Motion made in seconded, is there a Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee recommends. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
So we want to, um, come up with a vote and start, what is, what is the purpose of this action or scene, what are we hoping to get from this, are we looking for another project, is this a basis for another project?
So the question is, what is this $25,000 for the historic resource reserve to be spent for? Would you like to speak to this, Mr. Rans?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, true to, uh, residents, this action, we, uh, come to the board and say, is that, uh, these town receipt bring in $4,000,000, this is a matching bring in, and what we bring will do is to categorize these historical homes in the town of Dayton that have been, uh, done so in prior years, uh, this is, uh, one issue we must have, uh, designate those homes as such, and for any other further purposes, I plead that the historical commission.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I think this, um, money, this article is really important, I think we need to have an inventory of all the historical, um, homes in town, historical resources in town, so that we can, we need the historical information, I see Mrs. Gales in the audience, um, they can assess what may or may not be eligible to submit to the Massachusetts Historical Register, for example, um, things that are in the Historical Register, my understanding, um, are eligible for receiving, uh, grant funding through the state for things like rehabilitation, so that the town would still be responsible for maintaining those historic resources, um, so that's why I'm going to be supporting this tonight.
Ma'am, in addition, although we're appropriating $25,000, once the grant is completed, the Massachusetts Historical Commission will be reimbursing the town of Dayton $12,500. So the actual expense by the town will be twenty, uh, $12,500, not 25.
Mr. Moderator, this is a second entry, this year is, I think, does that go along choosing consultants?
So the question is, is how do they go choosing their consultant?
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to, for, for.
The process of choosing the recommendation consultant is, um, set up through the Massachusetts Historical Commission, um, where the water being good, the Massachusetts Historical Commission, our county administrator, this, uh, consultant, the election committee, uh, there's a whole process of, uh, going through the winter day, it's quite extensive.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimously, Mr. Moderator.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the amount of $108,513.97 to be expended by the fire chief as the first payment of a seven-year lease, to purchase a new fire engine and any necessary accessories related there to, Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made in seconded, Article sixteen, Finance Committee recommendation, your Board of Selectmen recommendation, Board of Selectmen also recommends, discussion.
Because to allow us to carry our cash, we have $500,000 from free cash, and then to, tonight's meeting before we complicated, any of the free cash, we expect to have about $300,000 left, if all the others are.
Yes. Why are we buying the fire engine?
What's the matter with the hat?
It wasn't the matter with the hat, why are we getting any one of the 12, 30, 50?
One of my places is a 1989 engine that's starting to experience a cancer failure in the lung.
So the engine that we'll be replacing is the 1989 engine that's starting to have issue within a month, can't tell you the situation.
Can't they get repaired?
Sir, please dress up.
I'm sorry, I'm doing.
Would you like to go?
Can't they get repaired?
I'm sorry?
I can't back give you a pair, and save some money, and I'll have that resource.
Thank you. Chief, why I knew versus repair existing?
Because we just keep throwing money at a repair, it doesn't fix the problem.
So the, the, the 1989 engine that we're replacing is kind of deep end of life, and it's time we're replacing it. It's many generations behind its current standards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the amount of $45,000 to be sent by the police chief for the purchase of one fully equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, patrol rifle, radio, antenna, and any accessories related thereto. Finance Committee recommends.
Made in seconded, the Finance Committee recommendation, is your Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen also recommends.
Board of Selectmen recommendation, is there discussion?
Do you know, do you want to check, um, in the form, there's a $62,800, uh, price, and your, um, Finance Committee or Selectmen are asking for 45, what's the difference, what's the issue, I know the difference in money, but why are we getting recommended for less money than the chief is asking, hopefully the reference has got tires and that type of thing.
So why are, why is the request now for 45,000 over the initial 62,000 requested? Chief, would you like to speak to that? So they modified the request, the type of vehicle changed, which was the lower-cost vehicle. One more, do you have further questions?
I'd like to listen to this time for us, from the general. It just doesn't make sense, I don't, I don't have any clues on who, uh, the day, and we have our, like, all spending, spending, spending.
Comment is that based on our, who's on patrol any after time, why do we have so many cars, and we have too many cars, so it's really not a question to state, they have plenty of cars, thank you. Further discussion?
All the systems vehicles that first were shot, and what's the type of vehicle that we're getting now, or we're asking for now?
Chief, can you speak to that, please?
Please, Mr. Moderator, um, the vehicles we generally get are a Ford utility, um, car, um, we looked into, looking at a 2021 Ford utility, higher engine, um, so we looked into that, it was a little cheaper, so as we got to know that, we felt that, you know, try this, this vehicle, um, with the Ford utilities, um, last couple of ones we had, we had some problems, we had to fix them up, um, it cost some money to get them fixed, so there seems to be some problems with the vehicle, so we looked at a hybrid, and we figured we could try this vehicle, uh, this time.
And you're hoping that will suffice?
We hope so.
Thanks, Chief.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimously, Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization, an amount not to exceed $100,000, to be expended by the highway superintendent, to purchase a used forestry truck, or take any action relative thereto.
Motion made in seconded, the Finance Committee recommendation, is your Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen also recommends.
Board of Selectmen also recommends, as this is a transfer from, from a stabilization account, it does require a two-thirds majority to carry it, is there any discussion?
What is a forest truck? Forest truck is a bucket-type truck that has a big, big body, uh, it can reach an elevation above all we usually can reach now, we break out from there, it's 40 feet.
So it's a bucket-type truck that has an extended boom on it to reach higher elevations?
What is the difference between a new truck and a version two?
New truck, what I'm asking for is, just in excess of $200,000.
So new versus used, there's a cost statement, so it's with the used truck, out of $100,000.
But the used one should be around $7,500,000.
I'm sorry, please address questions to me, please. Ma'am, ma'am, could you please address questions to me?
Uh, why are we not considering the new truck instead of the used truck?
Why are we not considering the new versus used, why? What's the advantage of a used versus a new truck, and what evaluation did we do to decide the used versus the new?
Right, so as long as it's not an hours in the truck, not versus the biological space on the hours of the truck, you can find the fairly low cost, you can be fairly comfortable when you get another 20, 30 years out of that used truck, and what happens a lot, the type of work we're going to do, stay on streets, you could be good.
So based on our utilization, based on the miles, or the utilization of the used truck we're purchasing, it's deemed that we can get substantial amount of life out of the, the used truck? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimously, Article nineteen.
Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $70,000 to be expended by the highway superintendent, to purchase one utility truck, Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made in seconded, Finance Committee recommendation, is your Board of Selectmen recommendation? Motion made in seconded, Board of Selectmen recommendation and Finance Committee recommendation, discussion. The amount requested, the motion is 64,000, I'm sorry, amount requested, and the motion is 70,000.
So we, we voting on 64?
We're voting on 70,000. For clarity, the article reads the $122,028.90, the motion on the floor is for 70,000.
Mr. Moderator, I have to, do you want to, do you want to share, do I have an explanation of, I would ask for your $122,289, the slip and the, and the Finance Committee recommends 64,000, $29,000, and I was like, we're a little near 70, just an explanation on, you know, maybe from the highway superintendent, 70 is from the body of the tractor that you need, so we need to appropriate more money to get the tractor there.
Just for clarity purposes, though, the Finance Committee didn't modify the recommendation to 70,000, so it was changed, so it's 70,000. Just for clarity purposes, though, the finance committee didn't modify the recommendation to seventy thousand dollars, so it was changed to seventy thousand dollars.
There are three different pages.
Your, your. I'm going to ask for clarity of board of selectmen. Open your recommendation.
We can have your recommendation, but then the sixty-four thousand dollars.
So the board of selectmen's current recommendation is for the sixty-four, but that is because they were not in session to re-vote that initially.
The finance committee's recommendation was this evening after further consultation with the highway superintendent.
Correct. Mr. Barry, would you like to speak to that? Why seventy thousand?
Originally, the one twenty-two was a utility tractor with a new boom more. After budget process, it decided to sort of retract it this time, maybe in the future, this fall, we'll consider boom more for back to the new, the hours of boom more running out. What changed for the sixty-four thousand, I don't know if it was a submission there today, was the contract, the state-based contract that you used, expired prior to, just prior to, that is the figure. If you believe what you want out of the need, it's going to be seventy thousand dollars on that contract itself.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of fifty thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents to be expended by the highway superintendent as a second payment on a five-year lease to purchase on the twenty-twenty street sweeper voted in article twenty-two of the annual town meeting warrant of June fifteenth, twenty-twenty. Finance committee recommends.
Motion made in seconded with finance committee and board of selectmen recommendation. As this is a motion to borrow in excess of one year, it does require a two-thirds majority? Correction, as this is from free cash, it's just a majority vote. Discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-one. There's no motion on article twenty-one? Article.
I move that the town vote to defer article twenty-one to the fall town meeting. I retract.
Hearing done on article twenty-one. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed nine thousand dollars to be expended by the board of selectmen to perform town-wide wage classification study for the members of the clerical union, public employees, local, two seventy-two laborers international union of North America, A L C I O. Finance committee recommends.
Motion made in seconded with recommendations by the finance committee and board of selectmen. Discussion? Someone please speak to the motion?
Okay, so as part of the last contract that the town of Dyne entered into with the clerical union, there was a tentative agreement to perform a wage study for the members of the clerical union, so that's what this is.
Further discussion?
Because it's under ten thousand dollars, it does require a bid. But it's my understanding that the town will not be doing it themselves, or they'll be looking for someone to do the wage study.
So the town will not be doing the?
It'll be done under the auspices of Massey National Association or one of the localized governmental agencies that does that type of work. It won't be done in-house. It will be contracted out of their governmental units, an agency that provides those services for the town. Whether it be Massey National or another agency such as that.
Further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-three. Hearing done on article twenty-three. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to re-appropriate the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars from special article, account vested in the horn. The complete street sidewalk project approved in article forty-four of the special town meeting on October twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, to be expended by the highway superintendent for an ADA-compliant roadway sidewalks and cross-swalk accessibility project. Finance committee recommends.
Motion made in seconded with finance committee recommendation. Is your board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends also.
Board of selectmen recommend. Discussion? When? Where? Where? Can someone please speak to where this project will take place? Mr. Barry?
So we tried twice with a grant in the field that funds private. This is multiple locations, north Dyne, central town, and south Dyne. It will mean barriers. It's not completely full sidewalks. It's eliminating barriers.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you. So there's multiple locations, both north Dyne and Dyne?
Yes, north Dyne, central, and south Dyne. It's timing is various, you know, locations, stores to be on and off sidewalks.
I just wanted to add, it was an honor to work on those grant attempts with our highway superintendent. This project would help not just the disabled community, but also seniors. A lot of the, some of the work, I should say, will occur at that intersection near John's Market, for example, in north Dyne, where the Gatro bus and I believe the other south coast bus that assists seniors drops off and picks up, as well as locations in south Dyne as well. So the project really encompasses many locations in all of the town. I mean, it's not centralized in one location. So it would be a big improvement, again, not just to the disabled population, but also to our seniors as well.
I see where we have a side walk, a road, or a service meter. And we always, the sidewalks aren't very wide. And we go to the sphere of the residents of the sphere, if you build a sidewalk harder, you wouldn't have to take land for somewhere. It's easy to have a couple of, you could design for the residents. Is there a?
So that was just a comment that, as you, as we all need to understand, if we put sidewalks in, the sidewalks have to come from somewhere, whether it be residential property or parcel of land or from the road narrowing roads. Mr. Barry, would you like to speak?
Yes, this is not taking any, it's not creating any new sidewalks. We're limiting the barriers. That's preventing people from getting on the sidewalk or off the sidewalk same age.
So this is only simply modification of existing sidewalks to make them accessible. Mr. Select?
I just wanted to comment, but it's, so I just wanted to add, to the best of my knowledge, we have not had to use eminent domain to take someone's land to construct the sidewalk. The town does work with the property owners to come to an amicable resolution.
All right, we're going to move on from that at this point. We're talking about modification of existing sidewalks at this point anyway, so. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into any contracts and otherwise undertaken, any and all action necessary to accept a gift of real estate from the owners of real property located on the north side of Main Street and identified on the town of Dyne in assessing span seventeen as lot one twenty-nine being one acre of land, lot one thirty-one being three point five acres of land or less, and lot one sixty-four being one point seven three acres of land or less, to be used for open space and recreational purposes contingent upon successful results of a phase-one environmental site assessment and authorize the board of selectmen to enter into any, into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or appropriate to complete foregoing acquisition.
Second.
Motion made in seconded.
Board of selectmen recommends.
Board of selectmen recommendation. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
These three lots are located on the north side of Main Street. If you're driving west on Main Street and go past the cemetery, and then you cross Richmond Brook, the next landmark you're going to see is a high tension line. The land under that high tension line going straight back consists of these three lots. And they almost, if you were in council oak looking towards Main Street along that high tension line, that's the property we're looking for. This land has been offered to us by AstraZeneca. It has passed a phase-one back in two thousand eighteen, but AstraZeneca needs a current phase-one, so that's what we're asking permission to do. If the town votes that in the affirmative tonight, that means that the board of selectmen will finish up with the phase-one from the engineer that's been contracted, and then they will take the necessary steps to add this property, get it recorded, and it will be town property for the uses that have been expressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, most of you know that AstraZeneca owns also the land that owns to the former I C I. This property that we're asking you to give permission to acquire has nothing to do with the dam, the pond, or the land around it. This land is separate and it's on the north side of Main Street.
Any further discussion? Mr. Select?
It's not discussion, just a comment. The board has been working on this for quite some time. I wanted to thank the board of selectmen for her instrumental work in this, so I wanted to thank you. I also wanted to add, I think this is a big move for the town, just my opinion. I'm fairly certain that they will try to probably buy houses there if we did not take this as a gift, so I'm asking the residents of Dyne to please consider taking this gift.
Mr. Moderator, was the I C I used that for U C C parcels for back in the day?
So all of the fire rooms of this property?
It's undeveloped land.
So they have to use it?
No, this is the high tension line running through quite a bit of it. And I will, I should also add, with the Brook Street property that the town acquired, I believe in the last meeting, where the separate Gansett River goes under Brook Street. If we acquire this gift, you'll be able to walk pretty much from Brook Street to Main Street on town property. That's why it's a great thing to add to our trails recreation.
So currently, as the restatement, there's no use besides the high tension line on that front?
Correct.
So I think you want to say, and now that ease into the, of, 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 of the intentions on increasing their footprint or their, of their, of their, of their lines on that?
Not, not this time.
Further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, due to the F R I T sixty Main Street, she was laying forward. I move to see at the time of vote to amend the town of Dyne zoning by law section two-nine one-six by deleting the existing marijuana complementing definition in its entirety. In replace it with the following definition, marijuana compleater will take any action thereof. Marijuana completer shall meet any entity licensed to complement process and package marijuana agent who will begin or transfer to other marijuana establishment, not to consumers.
Motion made in seconded. Is your board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Board of selectmen recommends. This is a bylaw change. It does require a two-thirds? So by law, a two-thirds. This requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Any discussion?
I came up from one or two forest tree. I'm just wondering, involving marijuana shops are in all different cities and everything, do we really need to go out of this? Because, you know, you all to, some, the nature channels have all these in place. I think we're behind in eight ball more, but maybe we should do one or two existences back and try to go with this.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Mr. Moderator?
The bylaw change that is downed by the rule that has passed this evening in the town meeting is a change to the state regulations done by the gaming control commission. They set the state rules and regulations not the state legislature. So this is a change that can directly now from the gaming control commission itself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So to restate that, this is an update to our zoning bylaw as passed down from the governing.
The gaming control commission and gaming control commission.
Any further discussion?
As this gentleman stated with the other facilities along the area, they do sell, I imagine this site we're looking at growing, not selling to be consumed.
Correct. Mr. Moderator? Hold on, so. There wasn't a question, right? No, there was no question.
Yes, there's not.
Yeah. Further discussion? Are you, discussion or not?
Okay.
Yeah, you're here. All right, further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator. Two fifty F R I T sixteen Main Street, she was laying forward. I move to see the town vote to amend the town by law section two-nine one-six by deleting the existing marijuana product maniac action definition in its entirety and replacing it with the following definition, marijuana product maniac action will take any action thereof. Marijuana product maniac action shall meet any entity licensed to obtain maniac action process or process, or package cannabis or marijuana products in, or deliver, or transfer these, I'm sorry, excuse me, transferring these products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. And this is going to change the appendix A, the use regulation schedule for the Town of Dyson by law, so it will be amended to reflect these changes.
Motion made in second. But I'm, I'm going to have to have you restate that because I'm not clear, you added words at the end that are not in the motion.
So the appendix A is what the use regulation is on the Town of Dyson by law meaningful itself in the book, is in the appendix, is in the book, is a table of regulations that we follow for our zoning by laws.
Okay, I'm going to reread the motion, just so we're all on the same page. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Dyson zoning by law section two-nine-one-six by deleting the existing marijuana product manufacturer definition in its entirety and replacing it with the following definition, marijuana product manufacturer. Marijuana product manufacturer shall mean an entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process, or package cannabis or marijuana products, and to deliver and/or transfer these products from other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Appendix A, use regulation schedule for the Town of Dyson zoning bylaws shall be amended to reflect these changes. Is there a second? Motion made in second. This motion also requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Discussion?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Board of Selectmen recommend. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a payment and rule of taxes pilot agreement with D.G. Dyson LLC of Scottsdale, Arizona, with a principal place of business at forty-nine-hundred North Scottsdale Road, Suite five thousand, Scottsdale, Arizona, eight-five-two-five-one, arts signs for a period of fifteen years, and to approve said agreement under which D.G. Dyson LLC with a principal place of business at forty-nine-hundred North Scottsdale Road, Suite five thousand, Scottsdale, Arizona, eight-five-two-five-one, arts signs will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to a eleven plus or minus acre parcel of land located at twenty-seven thirty-four Elm Street, Dyson, Mass., map twenty-three, parcel ten, related to the construction and operation of a photovoltaic solar facility with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately three-point-one-three megawatts, alternating current, and sent tax agreement on file in the Town Court's office provided at the fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Appellate tax board matter involving the subject property is resolved as condition precedent to execution of said pilot agreement on taking any action relative thereto.
Second. Motion made in second. Is your board of selectmen recommendation? Board of Selectmen recommend, is your assessor recommendation?
Board of Assessor recommend.
Board of Assessor recommend. Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is the pilot agreement I mentioned earlier when I gave my, uh, report at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, this will be the fourth pilot agreement that the Town of Dyson will have if you approve this one tonight. And this one represents fifteen years, a little over five hundred thousand dollars in tax payments. This particular solar plant has been in operation for a couple of years, and they have paid taxes accordingly, uh, for those years. Uh, so we are ready to move ahead now with the pilot agreement for fifteen years.
Thank you.
Within the motion, you mentioned a pilot tax board. Can you please speak to that?
Uh, yes, uh, the first two years, because there was no pilot agreement, uh, obviously the property was assessed and there was a tax bill issue. The owner of the property, uh, under D.G. Dyson, which is the company's name, clear away, they, uh, appealed the amount of evaluation, and, uh, since it had been resolved, and we were negotiating the fifteen-year pilot agreement, uh, they were happy with what the board of assessors had ruled at the time, so they appealed it to the appellate tax board, and that has been resolved. The appeal has been withdrawn, and we have included in the motion, because when this warrant was put together, we were waiting for them to withdraw formally that appeal. That appeal has been done, and that issue for the first two years of taxes has been resolved.
Thank you.
Do you consider, Mr. Moderator, this facility already that built?
Yes.
And what would they pay in taxes last couple of years, and with this pilot program, what will they be paying? A multiple of some dollars of value here. I mean, I understand that they pay taxes, but we own the farm, and if they pay any of the program, which we own the farm, I'm sure that they're taking into account the, uh, the, uh, the, but I don't know.
So for clarification, the question was? Definition of, yes, this facility already does exist on the property, and currently are collecting taxes on the property. What is the difference between the taxes we're collecting today and what the pilot agreement will pay Dyson?
My, my understanding is that the first two years of taxes, uh, among the two, uh, it was under two hundred thousand dollars, so that would bring the total taxes close to seven hundred thousand. Now the five hundred, hmm, excuse me, five hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, which is the fifteen-year, I'll call it, ancient land. Uh, all of the Dyson pilot agreements are front-end loaded, so that means they pay the highest amount at the beginning of the fiscal, uh, period. Twenty twenty-two, their tax payment would be sixty-four thousand one sixty-five, twenty twenty-three, sixty-two thousand six hundred, twenty twenty-four, sixty-one thousand thirty-five dollars, twenty twenty-five, fifty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy, twenty twenty-six, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and five, twenty twenty-seven, fifty-six thousand three hundred and forty, twenty twenty-eight, fifty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty twenty-nine, fifteen thousand six fifty, twenty thirty, twelve thousand.
The total was approximately five hundred thousand dollars?
Five hundred and three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
So for the fifteen years of paying the move taxes, five hundred and three thousand dollars. If we continue to pay taxes on it, what would it approximately be? Seven hundred thousand?
Well, we've already collected the first two years' taxes, so I would say if you add that to this, we could realize close to seven.
So is the, the pilot agreement then for additional thirteen years or fifteen years?
No, it's for fifteen years.
Okay, so, and?
There was no pilot agreement for the first two years.
Correct, so we're now negotiating a fifteen-year pilot agreement, so what would the tax payments go for that fifteen years to be seven hundred thousand dollars?
No, they're going to be five hundred and three thousand.
If we put the pilot agreement in place?
Yes.
If there was no pilot agreement, what would be the tax payments on that?
Well, what would happen, if there was no pilot agreement in place, the board of assessors would have to have the property assessed by professionals, deal with that kind of property every year. When you enter into a pilot agreement, first of all, you don't have to have that property phrase every year, so the town saves money paying the phrases. And so the board of assessors, I'm sure I remember at the time, board of assessors capital labor, what the tech, what their best guess was, what the taxes would be over this, uh, period, fifteen years. And this is the amount of money that I was reading on. As I said, the reason we get the, uh, numbers so high in the beginning is because we determined that the best, uh, figure the town to do is to front-end load them, so that's why when I got down to about the tenth year, we dropped from fifty-four to about fifteen thousand.
So we would say that, that every year it has to be evaluated by outside creator, that you could do it once every five years, or across some, some money, three times out of that fifteen year, it's a, a number, where you have to create approximately two hundred plus thousand dollars, I want to the pilot.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't intend to interrupt you. If you don't have a pilot agreement, it is my understanding, the property has to be assessed every year, and you have to have, uh, an assessing, uh, consultant, agent, whatever, qualified to do this, this would not be done by the assessors in the Town of Dyson. We have a similar circumstance with Dyson Power and Aquaria.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Selectmen, would you like to answer?
I don't know who can answer this question, so I'm just going to ask it, and if you know someone who can answer it, I'd love to get an answer. My understanding is that the assessing department hires a company, a firm, that does the assessment, so I guess my question is, would we be hiring someone else? That's already something that they ask for money almost every year for.
So would this type parcel family included in the assessment incrementally?
No, what, what?
That's all, that's good.
Okay.
So is the incremental cost associated with having this land assessed on an annual
Before I get a vote on it, I need three numbers. Number one, how much would it cost to assess the property? Have a firm do that. Number two, what would the taxes be per number over that fifteen-year period, which we mentioned on the set? Number three, uh, what's the differential between taxes that will be generated and this pilot agreement? Otherwise, things just won't begin to get better.
Thank you, so that was a statement that we need more clarity on the numbers, and then move forward.
I was just going to ask, Nancy, in the last two years, when this town front, had we had a outside assessor come in and do the tax assessment for the two years that they were paid for, we could, if we had, and I don't know if we have that done ahead, if we had had that done, we would have some able that costs us per year, back to Mr. Perry's question, of what was the cost of the assessment?
So the question was, over the past two years, how would we assess the taxation rate on this property?
I can't answer that question, because I wasn't on the board of assessors, but I can tell you that the numbers that were reached and what they were taxed is what was appealed.
Right.
Okay? Uh, and I want to point out also, when we talk of pilot agreement, we are only talking about the personal property on that land, which means all the panels and the wires and all those things. There is another tax collected, it is the real estate tax from the property owner, and it's at the commercial rate.
Thank you. Further discussion?
From, from a financial perspective, the pilot gives us the ability, from a planning standpoint, to know exactly what's going to happen with that personal property over the next fifteen years. That, five years from now, if you want to have an agreement in place, those panels could go to, who knows what happens to them, and they become less valuable, so we know, that's why, that's why it is vulnerable. So you plan on that, you know, for at least the next fifteen years, you have a committed , uh, rolling in time, and they go away. You know, this is the first pilot agreement that, that the town has entered into, whether it be solar, whether it be with Aquaria, whether it is with the, the, uh, power plant.
We have, and, and.
What's that? Yeah, we have, we have, we had some type of pilot agreement.
Tiffany? All the way. Further discussion?
So, okay, I, I just want to try to clarify, uh, this is personal property tax, not real estate. So the people that are doing our real estate tax, I don't do personal property tax, and it is a market that is, was evolving over years, and there's no real precedent as to how you assess this solar plant. And litigation, like this one that was ongoing, is common, and the towns haven't been all that successful, because you have to have an expert, because as any, any other personal property, that the panels get older, they'll have less money. So how much do they go down each year? That's the question, that's why you have to assess it each year. The pilot program, as Mr. Schwartz has said, gives you an opportunity to take a definitive sum each year without going through all that rigmarole, and frankly, the theme of the pilot board is beyond for a long time. It's nice for us, but it's not great for the town. So, I mean, the compromise compromises the pilot programs in these, like, nonprofit-type situations, uh, in, in solar plants, since one of the big pilots dwelt in Northern North. So, I mean, it's resulted in negotiations between the board of assessors and the property owner, and, and I think you have to go with the expertise of those people who negotiated it.
Mr. Moderator, the assessor's information. Just to follow up what Attorney Gay said, uh, for those of you who may have been in a town meeting here back around two thousand and sixteen, there were three pilot agreements on the warrant. I got up and made the motion for the first one, it passed. I made motions to table the other two. This one tonight is one of the ones that got tabled, so they came back and negotiated, and that's what's before you. The other party to that tabled agreement decided to take the Town of Dyson to court. Fortunately, the Town of Dyson prevailed, and quite frankly, uh, from what I'm told, uh, it certainly was a plus for communities who have pilot agreements, uh, simply because of the ruling that came down to Superior Court. I forwarded that, uh, judgment, uh, in its full context to the Mass municipal, and they then wrote it into, I'll say layman's language, and sent it out to all the communities in the state with the recommendation that the best possible route to go is for communities to negotiate pilot agreements, because there was a great deal of legislation still pending, and these are powerful energy companies. Some of them are trying to get tax exempt status, and that was part of what we were fighting. We were fortunate, we won, as I said, this one came forward and we negotiated. We'll negotiate with the other one if they want to negotiate, but that's another reason why we have taken on these pilot agreements and really looked down, because as Attorney Gay said, uh, there's no guarantee, they, we have, we have solar plants that don't have pilot agreements, but the ones that approach us, we've talked to.
Thank you, Nancy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-nine.
I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a payment rule of taxes pilot agreement with GHTJA zero-three LLC of Dover, Delaware, with a principal place of business at eight fifty Hubert Road and two oh one Dover, Delaware, one nine nine zero four, and a size for a period of twenty years, and to approve said agreement under which GHTJA zero-three LLC, with a principal place of business at eight fifty Hubert Road and two oh one Dover, Delaware, arts signs will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to a nineteen-point-six plus or minus acre parcel of land located at eight ninety-three Brook Street, Dyson, Mass., map sixteen, parcel twenty-eight, related to the construction and operation of photovoltaic solar facility with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately three-point-four megawatts. Alternating current, and tax agreement on file with the Town Court's office.
Motion made in second.
Mr. Moderator.
Your recommendation?
I move that this item will be tabled.
There's a motion to table Article twenty-nine number four. This is a non-discussion motion. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, the reason I'm recommending we, uh, table this one tonight is because we do not have sufficient information. We have been negotiating this one, we have been communicating. Uh, the company is in Toronto, well, it's in Missinacra, Canada, which is in Toronto, and we've been, uh, sending information back and forth, and as of last Thursday, the deadline to have every- everything done, uh, more questions came back, so, um, we advise them that we are going to, uh, ask for this to be tabled and that it will come before the voters after the fall town meeting.
So just for clarity, I should have had Nancy speak prior to the tabling motion of why she was tabling it in my direction, so we're speaking to the original motion of why you're now recommending table of the second for clarity purposes. Tabling are non-discussion motions, so. So all in favor of tabling article twenty-nine?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-nine is tabled. Article thirty.
I move to, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dyken Conservation Commission regulations by laws and policies and section three, by deleting said section three and replacing in its place the following section three or taking the actions thereof. Applications for permits and requests for determination. Written applications shall be filed with this commission to perform activities affecting resource areas protected by this bylaw. This application should be standing form and set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, D E P. At the time of a permit application, the applicant shall pay filing fee as set forth by the D E P. No local fee is required, however, the local portion set forth by the D E P is necessary. At the time the permit application is received or at any time during the hearing process, the commission is authorized to require its applicant to pay the fee for specific expert engineering and other consulting services deemed necessary by the commission to come to a final decision on the application. The commission shall, uh, the commission will select the consultant in question as provided by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G. The Dyken Conservation Commission may employ reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants engaged by the commission for specific outside expert services. Such services shall be deemed necessary by the commission to come to a final decision on an application submitted to the Conservation Commission pursuant to the requirement of the Wetland Protection Act, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, the Dyken Wetlands Protection Bylaw, the Dyken Conservation Commission Act, uh, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight C, or any other state or municipal statute, bylaw, or regulation as they may be amended from time to time. The Conservation Commission may also impose fees for other consultant services related to application review or permit conditioning or monitoring under any of the above referenced laws or regulations. Said fees for, for, or said services shall be sent forth in a regulation to be adopted by vote of the Conservation Commission in accordance with applicable law, including but not limited to M G I, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three G. The commission may waive the filing fee, consult fee, and costs and expenses for a permit application or request for determination filed by a government agency. The commission shall file the payment of the consultant fee prior to the initiation of consulting service. Filling by the applicant to pay the consultant fee specified by the commission within ten days, other request of payment or refusal of payment shall be caused for the commission to deny the application based on a lack of sufficient information to evaluate whether the project meets applicable performance standards in three-ten C M R, uh, ten and the Dyken Wetlands Protection Bylaw or its regulations. The applicant shall pay the fee to the town of Dyken to fund the fifty-three G consultant services account established by the commission with the town treasurer's office, which may be drawn by the commission for specific consultant services approved by the commission at one of its public meetings. The commission shall return any unused portion of the consultant fee to the applicant upon the completion of the project along with any accrued interest.
Motion made in second. I want to clarify the motion though. Was the motion as you read today or as written in the warrant? Because there was, fortunately, just missing words. Is it as written in the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is, I move that town amend the Town of Dyken Conservation Commission regulation by law and policies in section three, by deleting said section three or replacing it with section three as written in article thirty of the June seventh, twenty-twenty-one Annual Town Meeting warrant. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. And that's what you seconded?
Correct.
Motion made in second, as written in the Annual Town Meeting warrant. Discussion.
I had to ask, what's the difference between this one and the previous?
Our bylaw was originally written, the Dyken bylaw was written about fifteen, twenty years ago. There was no state law at that time. The state law has since been written, it is more stringent than our bylaw. We are now seeing that some applicants, and we have these applicants that work for it, uh, written a hundred years, a lot of fifty years, and they're trying to wriggle themselves into a less stringent form. So by accepting the state form of the law and, and occurring into our bylaw, uh, really I can feel, uh, satisfied.
Motion made in second, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimously. Article thirty-one.
Prior to adjournment of twenty-twenty-one Annual Town Meeting, I have the honor and privilege of appointing the Finance Committee for the twenty-twenty-two fiscal year. Prior to doing so, I am reluctant, but happy to, as... So, uh, as somebody may know, I've been chairman of the Finance Committee for just under twenty years and I stand before you a little bit of a heavy heart to say, somebody may know that I have recently moved from town. Although my law was still allowing me to serve, um, I find it is time that I requested the moderator, uh, not place my name back up for reappointment. It's been a great journey. I want to thank the residents, the many, many different boards of selectmen, the department heads, uh, Nancy will attest to it, because she and I took a stop in this journey together about nineteen years ago, that we've come a long way as a town. We've been able to professionalize our government and really taken a lot of steps forward and that's because this is a great community and we love living here and taking a next journey in our life, but I'm not going to go away. I've committed that I will consult with anything or any questions that we see through this budget cycle, but I wanted to thank everyone and appreciate all the support me and my family got here and that everything I was able to give back to the town and it's, uh, it is with a heavy heart, as I say. I thank you and...
So now I am reluctant, uh, because I, you know, nineteen years serving on Vincom, countless other subcommittees across the board, his contributions to the schools, to the water commission, everywhere across the board, but more personally, he's been my mentor since joining this town and being in this town, uh, eleven years ago. Um, my first expressed interest, it was through this gentleman over here and he's kind of been working through it, so I can appreciate his efforts and all of his contributions and all, uh, I thank him personally. So for the twenty-twenty-two Finance Committee, I am very happy, uh, to appoint, uh, Kevin Berry, Catherine Corriere, Robert Renon, Peter Roach, and Jennifer DeCausse to the twenty-twenty-two. I'm still looking at two open positions or slots on the Finance Committee for the next period of time. If you do have an interest in serving on Finance Committee, your application should be submitted to, directly to the Finance Committee as after today, they appoint their own members until next year when I can do it again. Uh, but, uh, good luck. Thank you guys for all your efforts and all your work you do all the time. Uh, having been in your shoes before, I miss it, it's a lot of fun, a lot of work and I appreciate it, so thank you guys for everything. Uh, and with that...
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Schlecker, I move that the Annual Town Meeting is, uh...
Second.
Motion made in second. Third, fourth. This is a special motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries unanimously.